I know all these people don't.
Now, now, but they go on one.
I wanted to see them. I was seeing their kind of phone.
Five was strongly agreed.
Five was strongly agreed.
And then you couldn't get on there.
Yeah, and you couldn't get them off.
Yeah, and then you couldn't talk because other people were on the phone.
You had different rings to went to different houses. Those might be two long rings.
Oh, I know.
The first cable had a clicker with the eight buttons on the top of the box.
Cheeseburgers.
I remember when they had three channels.
Oh, yeah? The three that went through there.
So, I tried something nice because that's what used to work really well. But then nobody else called. Okay.
Six and seven would go on to the left.
What would they do if you don't do it?
You have the signal.
Yeah.
And you could show. I just went through that where the cheese go we submitted in the grand. We're waiting for a cage code to come.
Now, we've got 200.
And they're submitted with numbers and it's supposed to come within five days. And they said maybe ten at the outset. Well, it's been three weeks and we still haven't received it. So, I couldn't submit the grant time.
It can take months to get there.
Yeah, so I, then I'm like, hey, I think it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. We're going to have a partnership with the D C F, with the university, all these.
I talked with Caleb yesterday and he said he would be here tonight.
So, we ended up finding out with the content. And then the USDA. And then I got an email in. And he felt like, you can't get into this.
Some of it.
And he's like, well, how do I get on it? I don't have a key.
Like close a compilation.
And he let me submit it by email. Then I had to submit all those emails and I got locked on.
Always make promises.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Can I put a thing up on your panel just to.
Is it right there?
I wanted to talk to you.
That's just for you.
Would you mind being a scribe?
She wants to be.
Okay, good, because you're the best scribe we've had. If I write, it's terrible.
Okay, yeah, that's my problem.
We knew you wanted to do it.
No, I just wanted to put out like the scale thing to make.
She's just got the best temetship, schoolteacher, you know. My temetship, I look like.
Not necessarily.
I look like a maid. He's trying to read mine.
I did it until I went to college and then. No, I just wanted to put up like.
Well, I'm safe as that. They'll never ask a physician.
We had to figure out the.
Now, those are so.
Try to make sure we have enough finance committee members on the wall.
Okay, okay, awesome.
As a physician, you make sure you never sign.
One waste and every time I read the survey. It's about what I thought, 50.
Yeah, it wasn't very technical.
No, and so I think we are going to have to eventually make some decisions, but I think it was good that we did it. I'm glad that you suggested it and I think we should use that more often with the public. Maybe 153 will turn up to 1,053 over time.
Just to give a chance for you to scan it if I can.
You gave us more. Yes, just to back up information in case you needed that. You may not need it, it's not really the subject.
Just in case you want to.
Yes. So, I have to explain the survey results and that.
What do you mean backwards?
The more points you get, the more.
It kind of showed amount of disagreement is what it came out.
Yeah, I know, yes.
The scales didn't match up.
It's not clear cut. So, maybe let's something different then.
I think it was just the way that. I should have just done one to 100. I thought one to five would be easier.
Well, we did know it's hard for people to get here. It's five, six.
Two outside.
Yeah, so six sides.
You're going to jump up and turn to each side.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing else, I have problems.
To me, it looked like basically we were down the split on what to do.
It's about right. Depends on who.
Actually, we all talked, you know, one on one over the subject. I think we, I think we've, everybody realized that something different has to happen. We just don't know what it is.
Correct, yes.
But it can't, we can't keep doing what we've been doing.
Because times are changing.
That's right, so.
It really doesn't have a lot to do with us as much as it does the times changing.
Right, and in fact, we have less and less money to do stuff with because the cost of everything keeps going, so. Most of those people go whenever you're home. Ron survived the whole Wednesday. It was very, very awesome. It was nice, yes. People loved it. Yes.
It was up till four in the morning during the display.
You were?
Yeah, it was. Ronnie was up till four.
Four AM doing the displays.
Doing the displays, yeah.
That man is going to want to help.
This one, I think, is going to give up her ghost.
That's the thing with that kind of paper. It sucks up.
Can I move it on the other side just because I'm right handed and.
Sure.
And it may stand again.
Well, now we can see the flag, Ron, was leaving. My husband was hacked me.
Stop recording.
It's not a perfect system.
No.
I would like to turn into a.
Returning in two hours.
I think we should get started.
Yeah, I think he was coming back today or tomorrow.
Welcome, everyone, to a special workshop from the Pittsfield Town Council for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. I'd ask that we all rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I please now ask for a moment of silence. All right, so this evening, we are here at a workshop to discuss the future of the Pittsfield Community Theater. People in the audience, again, you won't be participating, but you can take notes. And this is an informal workshop. There's only three basic rules that, the number one rule is our scribe is going to be Heather because she's the best at it. If I, I don't want Howard to think that I'm in AFID if I'm the one that does it because that's what it'll look like. Rule number two is we want to have a drop dead time of eight o'clock if possible. I'd really like you out here at eight o'clock because it behooves everybody. I realize that we're not going to get, we're not going to solve all the, all the ebbs and flows of everything in just under two hours, but we can get the basics and see how we go from there. And that, the third rule is that every, you know, anybody wants to talk, this could be very informal. See what kind of ideas we can nail down and what time we have.
Us.
Us, meaning people at the table. So, go right ahead and I'll let Heather get started. I know you wanted to finish up on the, are you all done with the easel?
I was, I just, I just, I thought that the results for the survey were a little confusing, so I just thought I'd try and strip that out for people. So, we had 153 respondents and the questions, when I formatted them, I said on a scale of five to one or one to five. Be, five being most agreeable, one being least agreeable or most disagree. When it went up and was formatted in the online, it was from zero to 100 in the opposite direction. So, so the results that were reported, like the 45, the 31, 55, 49, 39, 53, that's the average number that came up from all the respondents when the, when the items were averaged together.
Right.
And that was looking at a zero being most agreeable and a 100 as being most disagreeable or not strongest disagreement with the statement that was, that was written.
Right.
So, I don't know, does that make more sense now? I know how you said.
Well, I mean, I didn't realize that, but when I looked at it, it's obvious, even though we didn't know the scale was different, that.
Right.
It basically, the town is split.
Yeah, I don't think that it really showed any clear, I mean, if you look at 50 being right here, it didn't really show anything clear. The only, I started these two because these are the only ones that kind of are out of that middle range a little bit. And that was the one, question three asked about, it was whether or not you agree that the theater should be run by a nonprofit made up of a board of community members, somebody from the town council, the schools, and different organizations. And then number seven was a funding question for.
Next one you thinking about?
The tax. Taxidermist. Taxidermist should fund a portion of the operations. So, that one had, out of the funding questions, that one had the most agreement. And then this one had the most agreement as far as how it should be run. But, I mean, it was pretty much split down the middle. It didn't really show anything definitive, so I don't know. I mean, I think it was helpful because we got a lot of feedback in the individual questions.
Right.
Of what people said, and there isn't really a way to condense that very well. And then also, there was 27 people that left their contact information, so they'd be willing to volunteer. And this should have gone, Anne, did you get this from the theater group? I wanted to make sure, whatever happens, we kept those, so. But, yeah, so that's basically how the, the survey panned out, so as far as having to make decisions, I don't know if it was that helpful for us.
At least we got a guide to go by, something, we got a general idea of the feeling of how everybody's looking at it. It's pretty split.
Right.
And, you know, we kind of figured that, but weren't sure. Now, we've got a more clearer picture, I think. Go ahead.
So, so Heather, if I understand it right, from, you know, anything below the median there, okay? And those two questions, you know, that shows that more people disagree with the, the statement?
Agree with the statement.
So, zero is a five.
Zero is a five, so most strongly agree.
Okay, so it's opposite of what they.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be like.
Does it do that all the time?
I don't know. I've taken a lot of these surveys, but I've never made one. So, this was an experiment that needs some tweaking. So, 50 would be the no opinion, because when I wrote out the question, it was most agree, somewhat agree, no opinion, somewhat disagree, and then strongly disagree were the options.
Okay, and they, they basically reversed it when they.
So, basically.
Yeah, okay.
People don't have an opinion looking at that.
Well, it's not that they don't have an opinion, it's that when you look at all the opinions that were entered, they came out right down the middle, pretty much. It's not that there weren't opinions, because if you read the comments, there were definitely opinions.
If, can, can we, can we look at this in a different way, all right? Can we look at this as to how many people answered, you know, either with a zero or a five? In other words, you know, a zero, one, or a four, five, okay? So, you know, you're going to get, I mean, yeah, the average is the average of 153, but that doesn't tell you how many felt strongly one way or the other. And you may see it fall out differently when you look at it in those terms.
I think it's possible to do that. I poked around on the results section, trying to figure out how to present it, because you can do a bar graph this way, you can do a bar graph that way, you can have a stacked bar graph. And I didn't see a way to be able to do that. Aside from getting 100, like with the individual responses here, that was a setting. You could do it like that, but for each question, you're going to have 150.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, I didn't do that, just because I didn't know. But, but I think, I think you're right that there was a spread there, but I think for every, for every one, there was a five, because you end up in the middle. For every two, there was a four. And there were probably plenty of threes, which were kind of.
Okay. All right.
Well, it's good to try new things.
Yes.
Definitely.
So, I think the two biggest questions we have is, you know, one, what do we do with it? And two, the building. You know, if we're going to keep it, we have to be able to address the building and have a plan in place in order to do that.
Deb, you had something that you wanted to add in the very beginning?
Yes, well, I just wanted to make a statement to the audience that I'm the one that started this poll rolling. And I just want to make it clear that I do not wish to see the theater go away. I wish it to become something more. And the only way that was going to happen is a little bit of shock therapy. So, because the issue has been there for a long time about losing money. So, this now has forced the council to come to a decision as to what to do with the theater, which is what we're going to discuss tonight, hopefully. I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
I know, this is just, I'll just throw this out there. I was, I'm a, I have been and continue to be a big person that likes to see a community theater because there's only a handful in the United States. However, I also understand that it can't continue the way it is. I get it, I'm a realistic person. It, it will, I, it will probably eventually have to wind up on the road of 501(c)(3). But if it does, and the council's wanting to do it depending on the circumstances and the money, I'm in agreement with Deb that we could look at donating a certain amount of money, should it go to a 501(c)(3) if we have it, as a, as a gesture that we still consider it as part of the community, because we've had it for years.
Right.
And we still could keep a group, a core group of people together to advise and help.
Well, they would.
If it ever got to that point.
Yeah, they'd have a steering committee.
Steering committee.
If they were.
That's just my opinion. And the reason I say that is because I know the grants and stuff that would be available, should it go in that direction, that may not be available otherwise.
Right. Mostly foundation.
Foundation money.
Right. Which, it's my hope that we could have the theater go 501(c)(3). And today, it popped into my head, PEAK, which is our economic development piece. Either at the last meeting or the meeting, council meeting or the one before, I had asked Mike Gray, who was in attendance and is on that committee, if maybe they could start doing some community development. So, that popped into my head today. They're already a 501(c)(3). So, if they become economic and community development, they, the theater could be renamed, because it would have, can't be a theater, there's no money for theaters. But could go, fall under the umbrella of PEAK and be able to get grants.
Possibility could happen.
It is. If you want the theater to be totally independent from the town, then that will not work. But if somehow it's connected to the town, then yes, the 501(c)(3) of PEAK has applied for grants before, smaller ones, and gotten them for the town when we absolutely had to have a 501(c)(3). So, there's a possibility. And I was going to say, though, can't they expand what they do? They can, under their mission, it would fit, yes. And so, if they were to add community development to, through their, then we could, Heather had talked about the Main Street Communities Program, and that's another possibility of funding. You have to hire a person to manage that particular program, but finding grants and getting grants and whatnot would help considerably.
The Main Street thing depends on what type of relationship you have with them. If you are strictly a Main Street community, then there's a hired staff person to run the program.
Top to top.
And it's usually like a third municipal funding, a third town funding, and a third public funding.
Right.
And then, if you're an affiliate program, there isn't that requirement, and you still have access to some of their programming and resources and things like that. So, that would really depend.
You went in more depth than I did.
Yeah, because you can start as an affiliate and then build your way to be a, a full Main Street program.
Right.
And there's interest in people in town in doing that and having some type of a Main Street program, as well as a business, business alliance or a business development group. And then the theater could fall underneath that, because it would be community development, it would be business development, it would be downtown development, it would be buildings. So, there's interest in, in town for people to do that too.
So, a good community to talk to that did the affiliate program first, because they wanted to make sure that it would work for them, was Farmington, which is a larger community. They went with the affiliate first, found out they had the basis support for it, and then went to the full designation. So, they did a good two-step process.
I think there's only like four actual Main Street programs in the state.
It's very hard to do.
Whether it's because of funding or people, I don't know, but there's only about four, but there's like 15 or 20 affiliates. So, and whether they started the affiliate and they find that that works, maybe that's where they stay.
It does get you a lot of resources and training opportunities, connections.
Right.
Networking. But you are correct. Which we would need. And if, if people could tweak their mission to include community development. One of the things that I saw on the main community foundation website was, when I was researching for the, for community art program, I'm in math.
Hey.
The, I saw this symbol, it said CC equals ED. And what that means is creative communities equals economic development. So, although we do a lot of economic development, we don't do a lot of community development. And we really need to. The more we can provide or, or have for our residents, the better off, the more businesses that will want to come. And doing this with the theater, I think, is a good first step.
This is just something that popped in my head, and I realize this is a long way down the road and it's, and it's not a great comparison, but if you go down to, let's say, Railroad Square Cinema.
Right.
Now, that took them 20 years to get that to where it is. And of course, they have Colby College, and they have Thomas tied into that, they have the credit unions and the businesses. But I would like to see a similar sort of things over the years where we could tie in businesses, you know, tie in, like they have memberships. You know, they have memberships. And they play a little bit of everything, independent films, they, they tied in with different colleges, they tied in with, I'm sure they tied in with Lawrence High School in Fairfield in Waterville. And I would want to, I realize we don't have that kind of a draw, but I could see something similar to that years down the road if you become a 501(c)(3).
Main Street in Waterville is changing drastically. When I went down there, I mean, I, I think it's amazing, but there's nothing to say that we couldn't get help from Colby College also, because they do have grant programs. So, if we were to become, say, a Main Street community, that could be an option. When you start looking at community development, there's a lot more, I think there's a lot more out there for community development than for economic development. We do a lot of community development, but it's not organized. Right. So, it's not organized under a group. The mission of the Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation does include community development. It does.
So. And as a matter of fact, Mike had mentioned that, that once these, those other projects we could look at, we'll be looking to do other things, if you remember a couple meetings ago.
What do you think, Howard?
Well, I was just thinking, you know, as, if, if we use the 501(c)(3) under PEAK, would that be enough at arm's length from the town with respect to taxation and responsibility? You know, I'm, I'm wondering whether you need a totally separate 501(c)(3) for a cultural center versus.
I think they would eventually have to have their own.
Yes.
But I think now.
Transition.
Right, they could be.
Just get them going.
Yes, exactly. Fall under PEAK and then transition to their own 501(c)(3) once they get on their feet. They, they, I understand the other manager is coming back, so, you know, once the operating of the theater is in hand, then they can start the transition. And PEAK can help them find people to be on a steering committee.
Yes.
Which is what they would, they would need in order to follow through with 501(c)(3) applications, setting up their mission statement, so on and so forth.
You know, if, if we decide that, that this is a, an entity that we want to move forward, I think one of the first things we need to do is start referring to it as a theater. We need to refer to it as a cultural center, community center.
Thank you.
You know, cultural center.
How about the Bijou? I'm serious, I'm being serious.
Yeah.
Johnson Hall in Gardner is Johnson Hall, but it's the oldest opera house in the state.
Yeah, but, but, you know, I think that.
The theater was the Bijou when it started.
I think that we, we need to look at it from that perspective.
Yes.
We also need to look at it not as something that's going to happen in the next year, but as something over the next five years, say.
Correct.
You know, the other thing, the other thing we should draw into it, and, you know, they've got a new, a new headmaster's coming on. MCI, the ballet, you know, is always looking for, you know, places to do their shows. They go to Waterville right now, you know?
Well.
If we want to highlight Pittsfield, let's do them in Pittsfield.
Well, the theater is, the cultural center.
There you go.
Has been very successful in procuring live acts. They've raised quite a bit of money in a short period of time doing just that. And so, having the ballet, I mean, the ballet has performed there in the past. The issue is there are no dressing rooms, you know? I mean, there's, there isn't a bathroom back there either. I mean, so we would have to do some stuff to make it a little easier to have the ballet there. Like, there'd have to be a bathroom. And I think.
And it might not even be there.
Remember, remember.
You got to start thinking of.
Right.
You know.
It could be somewhere else.
Exactly.
I think, I don't know if. I think, I don't know if, the first question that we should address is the building. Because if we can't afford and come up with a way to fix that building long-term, it doesn't do any good to build all this programming around a building that we're not going to be able to maintain and we're not going to be able to keep.
Right.
So I think the first question, if, it sounds like there's a lot of support for the 501(c)(3) idea. It sounds like that is the way that we should go. I don't have it in mind or care yet. But I think the first question we need to answer is, are we prepared to make a huge investment in this, in this building? Because that's what it's gonna take. And it's gonna be, you know, can we go to our taxpayers and say, we're gonna pave all your roads, and then, you know, we want a million dollars to fix this building?
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
Or, we can either pave your roads, or we can put all this money into this building. I think that's the first question. Because everything that follows after that might be dependent on where the cultural center is located. And so that, I think, needs to be our primary question to answer first is, what are we gonna do with this building? Because we're not just talking about repairing it to, to make it sound now. We're talking about adding to it and making more space. And, you know, we're talking about not just fixing the building, we're talking about expanding the building in order to do these things. So does it make sense to do that financially? Or does it make sense to partner with another building in town or other organizations in town to locate the cultural center somewhere else?
Right.
We have schools that may, we may be building new schools in the next couple of years. You know, Warsaw has an auditorium, they have a gymnasium. Is there an option?
They don't have an auditorium, they have a gymnasium.
Gymnasium. But, I mean, is there an option of putting a theater in there? You know what I mean? I mean, is there other things that we could do that would make more sense than putting all that money into that building?
Well, I think probably you're right. We need to decide if we're gonna do that. Um, I, I never did see the, um, Chimbro did the evaluation, the first evaluation.
They did the first evaluation. And then we had a historic architect do the second evaluation.
Okay, so do, do we have copies of that?
Yes.
Can we have copies of that?
Yes, yes.
Because I'd like to, if we could see that, we could see what they recommended. We can see what the cost is and see what's the worst thing that has to be done. Can, you know, I would say the roof too, but, you know, in order to bring the building up to snuff and then maybe expand.
How long ago was that done?
It was done in two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say two years ago.
The other thing too, it'd be awful nice to say, geez, you know, they're gonna build new schools so they're gonna have Warsaw sitting there, you could use that, which would make perfect sense. The only problem is, is any successful theater you see is on a main drag. Or not theater, but culture, even cultural center.
Yeah.
Location, location, location.
Exactly.
If it's off three or four streets up, people aren't gonna go like they will if it's right on your main drag. It just, they just won't.
Well, and if we want, if we want to participate, something we need to think about, if we want to participate in, say, an affiliate Main Street program, then we have to develop Main Street. We can't develop School Street.
Now, and the other thing is too, is you also need to know that, like, you don't want that building sitting empty any great length of time. You, I mean, if, let's say we decide to move that. Ah, I'm not gonna say theater, I'm gonna say cultural center. If you, if you put it somewhere else, now you've got an empty building. You've got to, you, you gotta figure out what you want to do. Now, I know that you could say, well, maybe we can sell it to someone, so and so. Maybe there's another use for it, that's another whole workshop that you could have on that. But you don't want it sitting empty any great length of time either. So if a decision's made, we wanna, I think dual decisions are gonna have to be made.
That'll be part of the plan, what to do with the building.
Yep, exactly.
My thoughts are, this doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to throw good money after bad. If we have to put a million dollars into an old, outdated building, why not tear it down and build something new in that section? I would think a million dollars would build you a heck of a building.
I don't know if we could do that, though.
I think we can, because it's not a historic building. And if you build in the footprint, then you're all set.
Just build something energy efficient.
Well, and there's the building next door that's also for sale.
Has its footprint.
And it already has a footprint, so, you know, that's definitely a possibility. But I would like to look at what Chimbro had to say about what needed to be fixed, because.
A lot.
Yeah, if I remember right.
There was a lot.
If I remember right, it was, it was pretty, there was a lot of things.
It was all encompassing.
It wasn't just like, yeah, a couple hundred dollars.
Right, no, and I know that there's a lot of things.
There's issues with the bathrooms and the heater, I mean, lots of issues.
And so were there suggestions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, can you lay your hands on those right now?
Yes, we'll make, make a copy of the Chimbro review that was done and a copy of the two thousand and sixteen study that was done. It's pretty extensive to review. It would be hard to review it tonight.
Okay. So maybe you can get that to us and we move that part of the conversation to another word.
I mean, we have some copies.
We all have copies of the last one.
They do.
They do.
What was the budget?
Will you share?
You know, that's another thing that we never really thought of, that, I mean, granted it's a bar. Like Matt said, it's the possi, I know, I know you gotta worry about the footprint. What's the possibility of maybe building a brand new building there? It may not be as bad as you think, considering what people are getting for construction costs now. There's a lot of good bids out there.
We don't renovate an old building, it has a lot of problems.
It'd probably cost you more to tear it down than anything else to get rid of.
Which again, because we have the transfer station, we can haul it so we don't have so much cost from the contractor.
Yeah, I think, to me, I feel like, that even if it, even, even if it takes, to me, even if it takes several years to pull that off, I think in the long haul, that would be a really, really good thing for the town of Pittsfield. I mean, that would be, that'd be a monumental item to have, a good performing or cultural center, which would, to me, have like a performing arts stage type of thing. Which I know that's what everyone's been talking about. And I think that would be something that we could accomplish and look back twenty years later and be like, wow, that was, that was hard to do, but wow, I mean, that.
I, I really, I, I'd like to see it, and I know I've said this before, but, oh, like I said, I've been down to Railroad Square Cinema a bunch of different times. And it amazes me how many people actually have a membership there because they're tied in with the arts, or they're tied in with the school, or they're tied in. And that thing's pretty self-sufficient. And it's just basically done through, but again, that's a 501(c)(3), I know it is. But it took fifteen years to get it to that point. You know, the other thing is, if we're tearing, if the building's getting tore down and it's gonna be a while, then maybe we, maybe these, the old Universalist building could be used for other things to keep, to get that into the public domain. And then you could do different things in two of the buildings. I mean, that would tie them in together.
Well, that's, you know, as we're talking, I'm wondering if, you know, our cultural center doesn't have to have only one location? You know?
There can be other locations tied to it.
Right, so I mean, could we have?
Like if we had a community art program.
Right. So the UU Meeting House has expressed interest in having other groups and organizations use the space to have the building used. It is a historic building, and by partnering with them, we might open up opportunities for them to be eligible for grant funding and historical grants and things like that as well. So we can look at this as benefits to the town in more than one way. And if we can have two locations for a cultural center, then perhaps, you know, the UU Meeting House becomes the host for the theater portion of things until the other building is constructed or whatever we end up doing.
And then you could take the UU building and make that, the day, things that are looked at during the day. You play your, your films, your plays at night down there in the new building, or however you could do it. It's like the library has their access, things they could do, that could be the same way. Just nothing says it can't.
So it's been a while since we've given out copies of these to the councils. So we'll make copies for the counselors of the Historic Preservation Architects Review, which is very comprehensive.
This is.
Very comprehensive.
So this is, what is this? Who did this?
It would have been Ames. Ellen Ames, who used to be a Historic Preservation Architect on her own, who has joined up with a new firm.
Okay, so this is the historic one?
Yes.
I also want us to have the Chimbro one, because basically, I think they could tell us. And maybe we should have invited them tonight to listen to our discussion, but.
That was done by one of the employees on their own, who dedicated their time.
Right.
So Ben had done that from an engineer's point of view.
Right.
So that's good, you got the architect, you got the engineer. So make a copy of both studies, understanding that they were done in certain years, so you'd have to escalate it for your cost to increase it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I think it would be neat to see those, but I think that the council, my gut feeling is that we're thinking more something new than fixing them. Because I don't think we can really make what's there, what the vision, you know, of like what we want is. Obviously, to us, Main Street is very important, you know?
You'll have this as background information, but I really like the idea of something new in its place because then you don't have all the issues.
I think if it's easy to get the funding, so are new, then it would be to re, you know?
It may be, it's not a historic site. So we can take it down if we had to.
That part's.
Is that what you're thinking, take it down and build within the footprint of that current building?
That, and, and maybe, there's, there's one next door, because I don't think that building's big enough.
It's not.
No, it's not, it's not. Eventually, there would have to be an expansion. So if we built a new building and fit it in, well, we'd have to check the other building to make sure it's sound. I mean, we don't want to get into another building that needs a million dollars worth of fixing.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that you'd almost tear both of them down. And then just build one structure that would be the structure that we.
The issue, yeah, the issue with that, though, is that we don't have a cultural center at all while we are going through.
For several years.
For several years, yes, this is a long, that's why the UU church might be.
But if we took one down, built it.
That doesn't make any sense, because you're gonna be, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, we can't afford to do, build a big, huge building, and we can't afford not to have this on Main Street. I just feel that it's absolutely important to the community that it be on Main Street. I'm not saying that we can't partner with somebody and have some events at, say, the Universalist Church, but.
I think we should, especially if it's.
I'm not a church person, and.
It's not a church, their designation is a meeting house. They changed that a couple of years ago.
I'm sorry, I use church.
And the, I, yeah, it's hard to break habits, you know? But they have church there on Sunday. They want the building used for lots of different organizations and stuff.
So there's nothing saying that we can't partner with them, but we, we cannot lose a presence on Main Street. I just.
No, 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 I didn't say that. What I'm saying is it doesn't make sense if you, if you want to have the footprint of the two buildings available, which I agree with Caleb, I don't think the footprint that the theater is in now is big enough to do anything else in. It's just not. You can't put anywhere seating in there. The only way you would gain more space is if you got rid of that lobby and bumped it out a little bit. But that still doesn't give you room for bathrooms, dressing rooms, and all the things. And the stage is not very big. You know, I have, I have not seen the theater used as a ballet performance, maybe for solos or recitals or something, but not a full-on, that.
Well, they did, they did in Chimbro.
I have a hard time picturing it.
Because I was working at MCI when they did it.
We, we worked with a engineering, or an architecture type company. It was out of Bangor, and I'll have to try to dig up the name, he was super reasonable. He came down and met with us for free when we were doing a project, another project at the, at the church up, up here in town. And I think that that, that contacting somebody like him may be a good option because he could come and take a look, he would come and like measure it all out and, and take a look, and he would use his knowledge. He's been an architect for a lot of like libraries and different things. I, I don't remember specifically him saying that he's done a performing arts.
Is he in, is he in Pittsfield?
He's in Bangor.
I, I really think we need to utilize Pittsfield people as much as possible.
Yeah, I, I agree, I'm not sure there's somebody in Pittsfield that'd be.
I don't know that he's got the expertise here in Pittsfield.
I mean, Chimbro is a contractor, but I'm, I'm not sure they would do the architect.
Even, you know, the hospital and, and other entities that I've worked with, they use outside firms for, you know, for architecture and planning, folks that have done things like this. And they use local, you know, as much as possible for building and constructing, you know? And that's a way to do it. And what you need is, you need seed money to get the plans done. And you also need a professional fundraiser in order to, you know, to do a major fundraising campaign.
You, you would, you would need a picture. And like a really detailed plan to get everybody excited, just like what they did with the library. And, and maybe we could talk to the people that did that with the library. And I'm sure Chimbro would recommend somebody, maybe they, maybe there is somebody local that can.
I guarantee you, there's people that were involved in that library project, like Doug Fraddy, that would be more than willing, if they could, to help out. I know they would, because they're very community oriented.
Ah, I tell you, it's gonna be a big.
They did a fantastic job at that library, and, you know.
I'd like to address the issue, go back to the issue of doing one building at a time. This is Johnson Hall in Gardner, it's on Main Street. And to look at it from the outside, you wouldn't even know there's anything in there. But they're totally redoing it, it is the oldest opera house in the state. And in the center here, there is a picture. When I went to a show, in this bottom left-hand piece, that's where we saw the show. They have a small stage set up in there while they're doing renovations. This was, still had, they had a stage, and it had, the seating was on the floor. There was some elevated seating, and then, but it was a plywood floor still, because they're still doing it. And they're also having shows while they're doing that, plus running a capital campaign, fundraising campaign. So it, it is possible to do one at a time, and that way we don't lose.
I guess, I guess I would leave that discussion for at the point when we have a, a architect, you know, or somebody who really understands construction, what's there. And that's where the architect's knowledge of construction, what we need and what the footprint is like, would be super handy, because then they'd be like, oh, yeah, you know, I can see how you could save this piece over here so that you can keep using it for, yeah. But I wouldn't say I'm totally against the idea, but I'm definitely leaning more towards it, Heather. I think it'd be difficult to do, but, but maybe not, maybe I'm just not seeing it, you know?
My biggest concern is if, if this goes down this road and we start tearing down a building, and we're gonna be a while, I want to make sure that, that they'd be on board and the theater committee would be on board with doing things out of the UU building for the simple reason that I don't want that to get lost in the translation. They've worked very hard to get programming up, and they may have made some tough decisions. And I think we need to have that available to the public and to them.
Which is, right.
While this is in construction. And I think it would be who, both parties in the end. I really do, I think it would help the UU building as part of that. And I also think it would help the Main Street as far as that goes. And then we can tie them together and do different programs. But I, I really think that's a point, I don't think these people want to lose that part of it because they've worked so hard to get it to where it is, that I think we need a building for them to use it up. So that's something I feel very strongly, we should check in before we tear down a brick. That's just me.
I think having some programming at the UU Meeting House while there's other, either, either renovations or destruction and reconstruction going on is a good thing. And I think it would open up more opportunities for fundraising for the theater committee and the theater group because there's a kitchen there and you can do dinner and a movie. You can have, there's a little, there's like the big vestry area, and then there's another stage, there's an actual stage, and then there's also the, the church area where it has other seating. And I have talked to Holly Zedder about this, and they would be, she would have to check with the group, but they, she sounded amenable to actually taking the movie screen and putting it in there so that people could sit on the, the benches instead, and have the raised seating instead of sitting in fold-up chairs, you know?
Flat on the floor, right, right.
It just makes it a little, oh, wooden benches, but it makes it a little more comfortable. Just bring a pillow with you, you know? But, but, and then, you know, there's an option there, you know, that you could do other type of fundraising. You know, but, but, and then, you know, there's an option there, you know, that you could do other type of fundraising events in conjunction with that.
I know that we're not supposed to, but I have a couple of points that none of you have really touched upon. If I could just share, because I'm not ready to jump over my seat.
All right, councilors, how do you feel about, how do you feel about having the, throw, throw that, her, her concerns in? I mean, if it's gonna benefit, move this along, that's fine.
It's not like you have the town of Pittsfield here. You have a committee that's been working for six months like dogs on this. I put sometimes twenty hours a week into this building. You, you have no idea. None of you have even looked at what the aims, you have no idea what it says. You're talking about using a different building and tearing down buildings and adding buildings, and you have no idea what you're up against. Nothing. You haven't even looked at the, you haven't inspected the building, nothing.
This is, this is just.
This is the beginning.
This is just ideas that we're throwing out there.
You know what you're doing.
These are ideas that we're throwing out there, just different scenarios that we're trying to come up with.
This workshop is, is for the council to figure out where the council stands on this issue.
Yep.
Not.
Has the council ever asked us anything?
Well, this is step one. This, this, this is gonna be a long process, and we plan on asking a lot of questions. It's just right now, this is the very first edge of it, and that's all.
Well, I highly recommend that you educate yourselves about the building that you're talking about.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. You, was you?
No, it wasn't.
Okay. Was somebody else getting ready to speak, and I probably cut you off?
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm confused. You know, I, I thought everyone agreed that, that the building didn't have what it, what it really needed to be, what the town was envisioning for it to be, you know, as far as like,
Well.
You know, as, you know, as, as, as far as a performing arts-type thing. It doesn't have
Well, we don't have anything that's.
It doesn't have any dressing rooms or any staging area, or, you know.
But when I was, when I was talking about the ballet being at the theater.
Yep.
Which is now a cultural center. Chimro put trailers, their work trailers, right behind the building, so that costume changes could be done that way. I think that we can figure out a way to do stuff so that they stay in the same place. I would like to see what we have, I have the architectural. I would like to see the other two reports about the building. The architect and then Chimro, to see what, and then look at the building. And maybe talk to Chimro about how can we go about, if we decide we want to renovate the building, how can we go about it? How should we go about it?
Phasing.
Right. How, how do we fa, do this in phases where it keeps the cultural center open? Any comments?
We'll make copies of the studies for you. It's been a while since the council's had them. And when we do, we'll remember that those prices were in those particular years. So, but it gives us an idea. And we did, in the architectural project, already had completed the digital projector, so we've got monies that do not need to be raised in that particular figure. And so we'll give you copies of those. And then we will check around for, to see if Ellen Ains would come down to, through the theater with you. She's very, very knowledgeable. She had completed the, a historic architectural review, and she's very nice and very helpful. She's in with another company now. And, and formed a, a new company. And we can talk to Chimro to see if we can have an engineer come over to live with us.
Look, go through, have the, so we would have the reports. We could read them, write down whatever questions we have, and then. Would we meet, want to meet with both of them together, the architect and the engineer going into that building? With the, I, I would like to see how we could keep the theater and the cultural center in that same building on Main Street. So I'm in favor of renovating.
When you say you're in favor of renovating that building?
And buying the building next door and have it done in phases.
See, part of the problem is, is if it costs you, and I don't know, I'm not an architect. This is just pie in the sky stuff right now. Let's say it costs you a million and a half dollars to renovate that building.
We're not gonna.
And I'm not, I don't know if it's gonna cost that. I don't know, because I have no idea. But if it costs you, if it costs you a million and a half dollars to renovate the building, and for two million dollars, you can build a new one.
Well, I think, I think.
I need to look at the options.
Yeah. I think that's where we're just circling, where we need to get somebody, I mean, I, from my experience from dealing with architects or something like that, it doesn't take them very long of looking at a building with, and talking to an engineer to really say, hey, guys, you're throwing good money after bad. Trust me, this isn't, you know, we should, we should just do this way, or maybe we can do it that way. And that's where, we're, we're just guessing, and it's not.
Yeah, we're just guessing. We don't know.
Yeah, but the point is, you know what the council thinks. The council is saying that we want to have something on Main Street, right?
Yeah.
We want to not just close the theater, pretend like we don't have a theater anymore, right?
Correct.
And we're exploring whether we want to rip that puppy down and buy the next one next to it, or renovate that one. So that is our stance.
That's why this is a workshop.
Yes, but that's what they're hearing from us.
With, and I see Heather taking good notes.
I'm trying. Caleb was going really fast.
I know.
I wanted to base your location, and then I skipped to exploring, rip the puppy down.
We're not putting that in the narrative. Well, this is just a workshop, so the notes don't have to be formal.
They'll be bullets. So this is brainstorming. That's what workshop is.
Okay, so I, I would like to interject right here. Amber is sitting there making all kinds of faces. Her eyes are bulging out of her head.
I have, and, yes, I just, I.
Could you briefly say what you have to say, like in three minutes or less?
I can go way less than three minutes. First of all, my facial expressions come out with what I'm thinking, and that'd be why they're changing so much. I, I am just a little bit of disbelief how it's all gone from, we might not be able to have fifteen thousand dollars to fill the gap, to we're ripping down two buildings and putting up a new one. It's just, I'm, I'm just listening and processing and taking notes.
That's what we're doing, and nobody has said rip it down and build a new building.
Just a proposition.
We are brainstorming here. This is, and no decisions are made at a workshop.
Right.
So, and obviously, this project is gonna take more than one workshop. And obviously, it's gonna be, like Howard said, say, like over a five-year period. Once we decide what it is we want, how we want to proceed, then it's gonna be a five-year project.
I envision, I envision a movie theater slash cultural center, call it what you want to call it, to get the funding. I see that on Main Street. I see an, either an, either a nice new building, or else if you, unless you get some renovation that's so cheap that you can't believe it. But I see a good, modern, state-of-the-art facility there that's gonna attract people. And I can see that probably, just like you would at the public library. We'd never even recognize it. It turned out so well. I see absolutely no reason why it can't happen. It's gonna take some planning. It's gonna take some time, and it's not gonna happen overnight. But in the end, you'll have a, you'll probably have a movie theater slash cultural center that everybody can use that will last the rest of your life, okay? And then we won't have that subject again for a long, long time. And I can see that happening. We just gotta get the right people in. And like you said, architecture's a big deal. We gotta, that's step one.
I would like to, again, reiterate, I would like to see both of those plans or read studies. And then I would like to meet with those people and go through the cultural center to see with, especially with Chimro. We can do it with both, but I'm most interested in Chimro, because they put a dollar figure to it. So I would like their engineer to explain what priorities, how, if they were to, if we were to do this and over a course of time, how could we do that? That's what I would want to ask Chimro.
Yep. Well, I kind of, just real quick, my, I mean, this is, I mean, my view of it could be really skewed, but my view of it in the, in the future is a lot like what Tim is, is, is saying, and that it would be, but I am hoping, I, I guess I've never been in the Newport Cultural Center. What is, what is that like? Is that just like, that doesn't have a performing arts stage or anything?
Their library.
I don't know why they call it a cultural center.
I'm not a big, in like, fan of cultural center, but whatever. You know, I think, I mean, I think that, call it whatever you want, but my view of it is that it's more of a performing arts center, and that it is something that actually supports itself pretty much, pretty, and maybe that's not possible. Maybe I'm totally pie in the sky, but it supports itself more so, and there's, and there's like regular shows that are like happening at it. The people from in-town and in-outer-town are coming to, to Pittsfield, and it's one of those things that when people think about living in Pittsfield, they're like, oh, that'd be fun to live there, you know? The, the performing arts center always has, you know, like stuff going on. There's always, you know, and it's, it's a nice, comfortable, modern facility that's, you know, efficient and.
Clean. Energy-efficient.
Yes, and, you know, and it's something that our grandkids, you know, would, you know, want. So that's what I'm envisioning. Whether we can get there or not, I really hope we can, because I think that it's worthy of a lot of sacrifices there.
The other thing, too, is like, and I know, I, and this just one thing. Okay, when my son was, was doing drama at MCI, they had a regional thing, and they, and he, he got on that, and they had like four different schools that competed in, in drama. And they did it all out of, out of one building. And you could see that, something, something similar, when you, once you involve the schools. Once you involve BOSS OFF that way. Once you involve these different entities, along with getting, like, these people have gotten in these good shows, along with the movies, along, tie it all in together, like you said, and then kind of self-supporting of itself. And however you set that up, is, is, is however you set it up. I know, like I said, whether it's a, you, you have a sliding scale of, you know, you, you're a member of this, of this.
Yeah, capital campaign.
Right, right. It, it's, you know, so the, so the, what I get out of that is you want to talk to Chimro, you want to talk to, you want to get somebody down here to give us an estimate of what it would cost versus what we've got.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to walk through the building with the Chimro engineer, and their, have their study in my hand, and say prioritize this list for me, you know? Before we go ripping it down and having, I would like to know how we could keep the building. If it's fiscally, if we are fiscally able to keep the building, if we do the renovations in stages like Johnson Hall is doing, and I keep, I keep going back to them, because that's exactly what they are doing. And so they're still utilizing, and they, and the front, in the middle of the, on the front page, that's a whole year's worth of programming.
So.
So.
Thanks. One, um, my gut is, is that Johnson Hall is doing their renovations in stages, because they need to keep the building, because it's a historic building. This is not a historic building.
Right.
It has no, I won't say it has no value, but it's not an asset to the town in that sense that it will bring in grant money or funding money because of its historic designation. It doesn't have that. It cannot have it. I don't see the benefit of keeping the building and putting all that money into it, and then still having a building that will need ongoing repairs and ongoing maintenance, that still won't meet the needs of the cultural center that you want to establish. I don't see, a couple of things. I'm kind of with Amber in that we said we're not giving the theater forty-five thousand dollars in funding in order to meet their full year of funding this year. And now we're talking about, oh, we're just gonna put up a building. And yes, we're gonna do due diligence and look at it and plan it out and everything else. But it doesn't ignore the fact that we would still have something operating, and are we gonna fund that to the full extent it needs to be funded during the time that these transitions are being made? Whatever that transition is. If we're gonna keep the building and operate in that building while those changes are being done, then we still need to figure out, are we gonna operate the theater? You know, are we going to be having it be a town entity? And we haven't really, I mean, there's like basic questions that we need to answer before. And that would be the biggest one, because it has impact for our budget that's coming up this coming year beyond capital campaigns and all these other things. This can all come later. We gotta decide if we're gonna keep operating this theater next year.
And if we are at what level.
I think the town, I think the townspeople could swallow a little bit better if they know that there's other things in the works. If they just think, if they just see this going on and on forever and, and the cost of funding.
That's what got us to where we are now, though.
Yeah.
Because it's, oh, it's just a little more this year, a little more this year, a little more this year, and then it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Renovation should have been ongoing the whole time that the theater has been open.
But that doesn't change where we are now. So now we're at the point of, do we continue operating at the level and how is operating now? Because you're not gonna turn it into a cultural center right off the bat.
No.
And calling it a cultural center doesn't make it so. So I think we just need to call it the theater until it's a different entity or a different operation of some kind, because it's just gonna confuse people. They're gonna think we just voted to build a cultural center, you know?
And what is a cultural center anyways?
Exactly. I don't think that we can just up and use terminology just to make it different.
No, I think we gotta be realistic.
It's still the theater.
I, I think that, I think that, like I said, I think that if, if, if a plan is in the works to change things, then I think people are a little bit more receptive if they see no changes are coming. They wouldn't shut the library down while we were gonna rebuild that. I mean, you know, it's kind of like that. Now, now I realize there's more for the library than there is for the theater. I totally get that. But I think that if people know that things are getting done, then they're more apt to not give us quite so much grief about funding it.
Yeah, well, I kind of view it as if, I mean, I would rather spend some of the money, or spend the money that we would spend on the operation of the theater and really use that money to pay for the architect, pay for all these plant, you know, and like really try to, and, and maybe that's not possible.
Closing it while we do that.
Well, I, well, we, we have been talking about moving it, or it, 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 moving to the UU church, which is the UU building meeting house. And so I would think that that would save a lot on the budget of the theater, would be my guess. Obviously, we would give the UU meeting house some money, but I would think that that would save a lot. Am I not right?
No.
It, it wouldn't save any?
No. You'd still have to pay the lights.
You still have to pay for, right.
Your movies.
You still have to pay for people to work there.
And you do, and there's nothing been done to it. So we may end up spending more, depending on what the UU church, excuse me, meeting house wants.
It's gonna cost us more to run it at the UU meeting house?
No, she, she said perhaps.
Perhaps. Well, no, I'm, I'm looking at heaven.
We don't know.
We didn't talk about that. I just said, you know, what do you think about this idea?
Because they're looking to raise money, too. So we would have to rent the meeting house, I think. Don't you?
I would think that we would come to some type of agreement with the UU meeting house about utilizing their building, just as anybody else would, to utilize the building on a regular basis. They also do have needs for renovations for their buildings, but by the town partnering with them to offer programming, it would help them in grant applications, because they do have that historic status. And showing that they have support from the town will help their applications. I mean, usually if you have partnerships, it would help their applications to get work done on their building as well.
They'll get more points because of that.
Right. It would, it would help them score better on applications. But I'm sure, I mean, we would have, if we're gonna be in there using that building five to seven days a week, then you would want to help with the heat. You would want to help with the water, the sewer, you know, all those other expenses. If we utilize the kitchen for fundraisers or something like that, and have spaghetti dinners and stuff once a month, you know, at, you would want to help, you know, utilize their kitchen and maybe rent the kitchen from them in order to do that. So I don't think it would save a ton of money, but it's not something that I even approached Hollywood, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm thinking of it wrong.
Possibilities. I mean, it might. I don't know. You know, it might bring in more revenue to offset the expenses, because you would have other options there. You know, it might bring in more revenue to offset the expenses because you would have other options there. You know, you could have a larger audience in the larger room or you could have smaller, um, you know, more intimate concerts or something like that. Maybe you could do a, a wine and cheese and, and comedy night or something in there or do small plays or something. I don't know. Um, you know, but it does open it up to other options for, for fundraising and for events.
You didn't write any of that down.
Anne's got one more comment. Does anybody mind if she throws it out there? Go ahead, Anne.
Well, I just wanted to, to just put it out there. I, I don't know why I feel this way. I just have for a while. I hope that the ballet is here for another twenty years. I think that before we get crazy about, you know, um, accommodating the ballet, perhaps the committee or the council should approach MCI, find out where they are with their ballet program. And last time I knew they had two employees, um, that scares me. If Natalia falls down and breaks a leg, there's no teacher. So I, I just think that probably there ought to be something looked into that. I, I feel like that's like wavering. Since, since Boasoff himself is gone, I hope not, I certain hope not. I hope he's here forever, but it is something to think about.
Talking about dressing rooms and bathroom and bigger stage.
But we would need a performance.
You would need that anyway. So we're not catering to the ballet.
My thoughts were, no, I didn't say you were catering to the ballet. I said, don't, just consider looking into that portion. It's wonderful they're here in town. Let's make sure they're gonna be here a few more years and.
And if they are, maybe we can partner with them.
And find out if they're willing to partner before we think we're gonna get any funding and any, any help, any assistance or even any participation, because they're not beating down the door now, which I can kind of understand. But if you ask Dean Neal, he won't come to this theater unless it's a free performance because he told me he can do it at the gym at MCI for nothing.
He can, but it won't sound the same.
But he can still do it for free.
I would.
I don't think Dean cares about that part, obviously.
Well, I think Dean needs to think about the community that he works in.
You know, the biggest, the biggest thing is don't put all your eggs in one basket.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm just saying, maybe we should all look into, or there should be a committee look into where they're at with that ballet program. I hope it's here forever. It's something to think about.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm not super familiar with the ballet program. Is the ballet program its own entity located at MCI? Or is it actually part of processing, of programming at MCI?
MCI owns it now.
They own it.
They own it now.
I was told it was its own entity, so we should check it.
They own it. And it would be a huge amount of money.
So they've taken it over within the last.
Yeah, Mike Wiley left. They own it.
Okay.
Mike Wiley left and MCI took it over.
Why did Mike Wiley leave? Can I, um, can I ask a, uh, can I ask a question that's totally, probably unrelated to any of this stuff? But we talked about at the very beginning, um, we talked about main state commu-, uh, community, and how Farmington Theater did this. Is, is that something we want to look into? Maybe, maybe pick that right?
The town of Farmington.
Maybe we should see if we can get somebody down here and ask them some questions or.
Well, first of all, I think we need to put a plan together, what we need to do first. Because now we are just all over the place and we completely need to.
That's a solid issue, but a good one.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't want to lose that, that's all.
So there's, as far as talking to the Main Community Foundation with the Main Street Program, there's, I'm part of a group of people that are working on putting together, um, like a core group to meet with Anne Ball. Um, she is the contact person for the Main Street Foundation or Main Community Foundation.
Main Community Foundation, yeah.
And so we're looking at, uh, having a meeting maybe late July. We're trying to contact people that might be interested in, in sitting on a board or core group of some kind. And, um, and then looking at meeting with Anne and then having a, a public meeting later on to come up with like, come up with like a roadmap and a proposal and then have a public meeting to, to draw people in and see what's important for that. So, so that's not gonna go away. I mean, that's a separate issue from this. Um, but if that were already established and running as its own 501(c)(3), then it could, um, take the theater under its wing. A Main Street Program.
A Main Street Program.
Could utilize the theater as programming under the Main Street Program. Because it's on Main Street, it represents economic development, it represents development of the Main Street and has a strong community aspect to it. And those are the components that you need for their programming.
So you said you're on a committee?
It's just a group of people that have been talking about it, trying to pull in more people.
Okay, because I think, I would like to go through the theater with the two different, um, studies. That's what I would like to do and see. And we could start chipping away at some of this, but we need to have a plan. And we don't have one, so I know this is our first meeting and we're just brainstorming, but the decision to either keep that building or not is going to be crucial. We need to make that decision before we start the budget. If we, if we, either way, we have to decide before the budget process, what we're gonna do. As far as the building.
So we'll educate ourselves on the building, so I'll look on that.
Okay.
Okay, so I, everybody in agreement with that? Get the two entities in and have them go through the bill and give us a rough estimate as to what we're looking at? And so that'll be step one.
Step two, could we meet with the UU meeting house and find out what?
What it is they have to offer.
How much would we, you know, like how many days a week would we want to use it? How much is it going to, like, what are the expenses? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to get some sweetheart deal with the UU church, with the UU meeting house. I'm just trying to understand like what would be a fair, you know, split of like the, cause obviously we're heating, you know, like some of the big ticket numbers that we're looking at, um, in the budget. You know, like heating and employees and, you know, stuff like that, I think, um, are ones that would change, I would say, but, but maybe not, I, I don't.
We're everybody good with the first two steps? I am.
Remembering that, um, any meeting that we have with the UU meeting house, because we don't have the specifics, they will not be able to provide specifics either, until we have more specifics on what we would wanna do.
Yeah.
So we'd have to map that out a little bit.
Okay, yep, and that's where it'd be good to probably work with.
So.
Committee.
How, how we go about mapping this out? I mean.
We're gonna take out our budget and figure out.
We have to make a decision.
I'm thinking with the results of the survey that we did, you know, we had a hundred and fifty-three respondents, you know? It was promoted on the website, but it really wasn't promoted much beyond that. I'd really like to get more of a feel for, from the, the town folk as far as what their interest is in, in helping, you know, with this or desiring to have it be in existence. You know, uh, if there's, if, if there's, if people are telling us, I don't want a, a theater or a community center or a cultural center here, then, you know, um, we're, we're going to continue to get pushed back year after year, no matter what we give to the, to the, to the movie theater or whatever it is. You know, how do we convince people, more than a hundred and fifty-three of the folks in town, that this is a, a reasonable entity and that they want it?
Well, one of the ways you can convince them will be, like I said, I'm gonna use the library as a perfect example. People wanted to shut that down and we said, heck, no, we don't want to shut that down. And people realized that it was in danger of being shot down. And then people got together, they did a capital campaign, they did all the things that we're talking about. And I think it needs to be sold, and I mean, you gotta look at the part of it, how much it's gonna cost and all that. But my end picture is, is if they become a 501(c)(3) and it becomes a renovated, whether it's renovated or a brand new building, in my opinion, along with the UU meeting house, between the both of them, I think it can be turned into a moneymaker down the road. There's, there's absolutely no question about that. If you got the right facility, you can draw the right things. But again, you've gotta see how much the upfront cost is to start with. But I think we can convince them on that end of it, Howard, if we can get a decent price and some things fall into place.
I think before we even talk about that, is this, this council needs to decide yes or no. Do they want a theater? Do they want a performing arts center? Do they want both? Do they not? I mean, I'm, I am like frustrated up to here because nobody is making a commitment to anything. I made a commitment. I want to keep something, I want the theater to be, not be the town's responsibility, but I don't want it to go away. I want it to be something more there. I have made a statement. That's where I stand. And I think the rest of the council needs to do the same. This circle talk is just driving me nuts.
Well, I think if you do step one and step two, then we have a lot more information that we can use and we can make sense out of it.
I mean, we've given, we've been talking about the theater. The, the people can watch the meetings, they can read the minutes online, whatever. They know what's going on and they choose not to, to do the survey. They choose not to come to the meetings. The only time people come to the meetings is when they wanna scream at us because we've done something wrong. Nobody wants to come and say, hey, that was really good what you guys did. So I think we should just make the decision, period. So, sorry.
I think we need town input in order to do it.
I think we gave them that opportunity and they chose not to take part in it.
I know, I know.
So how many times are we gonna do that? We have a budget process that's gonna be coming up and we have to make a decision whether this entity, whatever it's gonna be, is gonna be supported by the town. Uh, through taxation, are our tax dollars gonna, are we gonna budget for the entity to operate over the next year or what?
I think that if I had the answers to one and two, and if they come up reasonable, then I would, then I would go out on a limb and say, listen, I think we ought to fund it for another year and see where we're at. Now, I can make it better, I can make a better decision when I see what we're looking at.
Yeah, what, you make it, what'd you say?
To what extent will you fund it for the, for the next year?
Well, that's.
For the next five years?
Right.
You know?
Right, that's the other thing.
If we go forward with this possibility, you're not committing to funding it for the next year.
It's five years or more.
Five years or more, you know, and, and that is a bigger pill, you know, to swallow.
And that's why I kept mentioning Johnson Hall, because they are utilizing their space at the same time that they're renovating it.
They have more than one room though.
Yeah.
But I understand that, but all I'm saying is the possibility.
Why do you wanna put, yeah, I can understand renovating a, a building, okay? And heaven knows, I've bought an old home and I've renovated every room, you know? And I put more into it than it's worth right now.
Two o'clock.
I'm not, I'm not from Pittsfield, okay? I'm not even from Maine originally, I was born in Connecticut. One of the things that I like, watch it, um, is that there was a theater, except that it wasn't taken care of. And now.
See, but why do you wanna put a quarter of a million dollars into a roof that, you know, is over a?
It's gonna be a quarter of a million dollars to put a roof on?
The estimate was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars four years ago.
So probably about two hundred and twenty thousand now. But if you could build a brand new building for three hundred and a quarter, why wouldn't you wanna do it?
It would, it would cost more than three and a quarter to build a building.
But I'm just saying, that's.
We are looking at over a mil-, over a million dollars to build a new building.
So can we decide tonight? Is it too much to ask? Are we going to become a 501(c)(3) or is it going to stay with the town? That just needs to be decided.
We can't make that decision tonight. This is a workshop, we are not voting. It has to go through the proper channels.
Has to be, has to be a council leader.
It has to be on the agenda, has to go to public hearing.
Yeah.
And we're, we are strapped down by our own procedures, okay? We meet every two weeks. Now we're instituting workshops, but that's every two weeks. You know, stuff has to be discussed. Then it has to go on, get on the agenda, has to be discussed some more. If we're gonna do it, then we need an ordinance, so it's another two weeks and we need a public hearing. You understand what I'm saying?
Do I expect a note of frustration from that voice?
Yeah.
Now, what do you get twenty more to do about? We'll all hear.
It's just.
Gets worse.
We can't, and you can see, we're having trouble seeing the entire picture of this.
So what if I came to you and told you I have half a board that's ready to, um, come on board and say that they would like to start a 501(c)(3)?
Go for it, baby.
Oh, okay. We're here, we're ready.
That's what I would say. You mean as far as putting a steering committee together like we talked about? So that they're not the town committee, which is only dealing with operations. You would have a steering committee that would help resolve some of these, explore these issues. Get you your 501(c)(3), come up with your mission statement, put a capital campaign together. And that is what I recommended to the theater committee.
I, I think, I think it, I mean, it's quite obvious, I mean, we can't make that decision tonight, but it's quite obvious that we can't keep doing what we're doing. Okay, it's not gonna work, yes?
So is it that, I just have a quick procedural question. Is it that the 501(c)(3) needs to be set up and then proposed to the town taking over? Or is it that the town is gonna recommend a group to set the 501(c)(3)? I just wanna know which one first, chicken or egg?
We, we're not gonna recommend a group for the 501. If you've got something started, I would jump on my horse and run as fast as you can to get some of that done over the next couple of months before we go into the budget process.
And then present it.
Because that would give us an idea of, if you can do that, if, if you've got a plan and you've got a steering committee and you can make a presentation that has some sort of plan to it, even if it's just for the first year, then we can decide how we, how we wanna proceed.
Put it, put it together and then present it to the council.
But is that your meaning, could I get on the agenda for this?
Well, it wouldn't be that.
Well, I don't, I don't think that Anne could, I mean, she only has a few people now, right? So.
How, how would the 501(c)(3), just in a two-minute breakdown, how does that change what's going on with the theater?
It makes it eligible for grant money.
Because the town owns an op.
Mostly foundations.
So right now.
Not eligible for foundation money.
Okay.
But if a 501(c)(3) owns and operates the theater, then they would be eligible to put in applications for.
For grants.
And the reason we've been talking about performing arts or cultural center is because that opens up for more grants.
Now.
Because there aren't, it's my understanding there's no.
Guys, can, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to know in reference to Caleb's question, yes, the town can get foundation funding through PEAK, but it's mixed in with the economic development, community development. If you want the organization to be separate from the town and we just give a donation, then they're gonna need their own 501(c)(3). But if something comes out, we can, you know, something comes out of the blue and all of a sudden there's some money there, we can go apply for it under the town's PEAK because we have a 501(c)(3).
And I think that's what we've talked about, is starting with, using PEAK as their umbrella until they can get their own together, correct?
That can be done.
Okay.
I have serious reservations about using PEAK.
It's gonna be confusing, but.
Because one, it's tied to the town. Two, none of the people on PEAK have any expertise in any of this that I can see. Correct?
You might look at the expert, that's for sure.
I mean, none of them have any expertise in, in anything performing arts related or, or anything like that.
But that's why we, we can advise, people do advise us that they're experts in the field.
And I put together a community art program in about two weeks on paper.
But I will tell you this much, Mike Gray and Gary have a lot of resources and they can pull people, they can pull people in, especially Gary. They can pull, they can pull people in that are, that are experts in that area. If that's, and I understand that would be a concern of mine too.
It's a stopgap measure.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I, yeah, I don't see it as a. Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I, yeah, I don't see it as a long-term viability.
No.
There needs to be a separate entity for that. It might get them through the first six months or something to get the ball rolling.
It would be a stopgap.
But I don't think that we can rely on Peak to be the primary driver of this. It needs to be another organization. The Pittsfield Development Corporation is a 501(c)(3). They operate as part of Pittsfield. So, I would encourage you to look at that. Okay, good, I was gonna ask you about that. So, and we'll probably talk some more. But, um, but that I would see as more viable because, one, it's already a community development type of organization and it already has-
Who are you talking about?
Part of Pittsfield. Is a 501(c)(3) under the Pittsfield Development Corporation.
Right.
Is the actual, and then they're doing business as Part of Pittsfield. And so, this mission of a cultural center, this mission of community development falls under that umbrella a little bit better than it does under the economic development. And I think that if we want Peak to do other things for economic development, then we need to let them focus on that and let them do that. And not muddy the waters and throw this other thing at them.
Okay, although they seemed willing to do community development work.
But I don't think they're willing to set up, step up and run the theater.
That's, no, that's not-
They're not gonna run the cultural center.
That's not what I was talking about. That's not what I was saying.
Doing community development is different than operating the theater and setting up a cultural center. I mean, that's a full-time job for someone to, to get this up and running and be an executive director and be able to push all the buttons and pull all the knobs and all those things to make this happen and organize things. It's not going to be something that, um, an, an organization with what, four members? Five members can, can even start doing. There's too much work that would need to be done in order to do that. Well, at this point, we would need them to be the fiscal partner. Right.
Right, so that they could write, that's all, right. That's all we were talking about using Peak for is an umbrella for-
Fiscal agent.
So, that they could start applying for grants.
But if you want it to be separate and not part of the town, Peak is not the venue.
I understand that, but it is a stopgap until they can get their own 501(c)(3).
Which is gonna take a while.
And Heart of Pittsfield right now is the Woodruff.
There's four people involved and there's people that could be-
Yes, but they're, do they have regular, I don't think they're still having regular meetings 'cause I'm not getting any-
It's suspended a bicentennial.
I'm one of the directors and I don't get any emails anymore.
Well, I think because it was, the bicentennial has taken over everybody's attention, you know? So, I would expect it to become more, um, more active this fall.
Okay, so, we are pretty much, uh, we, we agree on the step one and the step two. Are we, everybody in agreement with that? Step one being the two, get the two different, uh, people together, the, uh, the estimate and walk through the theater with them and have them look at that like Deb suggested. We everybody good with that? There's nobody good with that?
Yeah.
Everybody, I mean, it can't hurt, far as I'm concerned.
So, they're gonna do it separately, give us reports and then we're going to walk through with them?
I think we'll get the reports first so you can look them over, understanding they were done in past years. In the meantime, we'll contact the individuals. The Chimbrow report was done by an engineer separately from Chimbrow, but it didn't have their name on it.
Was it, yeah, and a Chimbrow employee.
Correct. He did it as a special project by a Chimbrow employee on his Chimbrow time. And he was very nice and helpful. And then Ellen Angel and her company did the historic review.
Right.
Do we need a historic review done?
Well, she's, I mean, we've already had one, right?
We have the review, so we should use it. It's very good.
Well, I know, but all the historic things that she spoke about and the issues are all still there, so I don't know if we need to have this done again.
We don't need to have it done.
Not this.
No, this is still good. We need to put an escalator in it for the cost.
You're just looking for a walkthrough with her?
Yes, yes.
Have her as part of the walkthrough.
I know, but what I'm saying is if it's not a historic building, why are we doing it?
She was a historic architect, so she used, um, certain federal standards when she put this together. So, we'll talk with her about that. But she had to use certain standards to review it as an architect and due to her, um, her background. And so, it's still valid, it's still valid.
It's not of historic value.
It is not a historic building. It's been remodeled too many times. That's why we can't get the historic grants or the designation.
I'm just, I just don't wanna waste somebody's time. I mean, if she's already looked at the building and given us some-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to, I'm more interested in the engineer.
The engineer's the one that's gonna give us the dollar.
We need to have them both down. And the historic architect would love to come down. She loves the theater.
She must come down, buy her down.
I think it makes sense to have an architect-type person there, not just because of her historic knowledge, but just her knowledge of buildings and what, what you need to make it what we maybe want it to be type of thing, you know?
That's another question altogether is what it would cost to make it what we want it to be.
Yes, but she may be able to just give some tidbits.
We haven't even decided what we want it to be.
I know, but she could-
Or if we want it to be something else, so, we're safe first.
Well, we pretty much know-
Or if it's something else that the town doesn't pay for.
So, are we good on the step one? Is everybody, is everybody okay? Can they live with that?
Repeat that again?
Decide just-
Two different, have, have, have the person come down, like you said, the one that, the one that, that did this with Chimbrow and walk through the building and have the historian down, walk through the building. And then step two, we get an estimate as from the, if we can get a, a cost analysis, some sort of an estimate from the person that we walked through, then we can go to step two and meet with the, uh, once we develop a plan on that, we can meet with the people at the UU building afterwards. Is that correct? Did I get that right?
We would give, um, the UU people at the meeting house an idea of what we would want to do from talking with the committee if we went into their building during a period, you know, period of time, like let's say what it would cost for a year, based upon how we wanna use it, which we can figure out.
You're just doing assumptions.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I don't know as if us meeting with the UU meeting people would be that beneficial as much as like maybe Deb meeting to talk about what they need. 'Cause us trying to guess what you guys need, that'd be just chasing our tail around.
We don't know if we even need them unless we know if something's going on in the actual building we're in right now.
But it would be good to know, though.
It's, we still need to do the research. It's a, it's not-
Yeah, it's just an option. It would be good to know what that option, is it gonna cost more than what it, you know?
And so, those are the two steps I can, I'm sensing that we've gotten to tonight. We're not gonna get much further tonight. Does everybody agree with that? We're kinda, you know, we're kinda beating the dead horse again and it's not, it's not what it's for. It's just the way it is.
It's a complicated-
It's a very complicated, it's gonna take a while. In the meantime, my, my, my sentiment is, is if we get the, if we take them through, we get the estimate as to what it would cost to redo it, and then we, then we'll know, then we'll take it from there.
We're gonna actually ask them to do an estimate. Uh, that wasn't what I, I-
They already have one. It, we'll just, we'll go over what we thought.
Right, go over what they, what they thought it would be.
For today's prices and things.
Correct, right.
Basically, they already know.
It'd be between this and this, yes.
Should we ask the committee to, you know, maybe put together a presentation on what their interest is moving forward? You know, from point of view-
Yeah, I, I-
We're asking for that in the past, committee.
You know, I mean, whichever.
Well, that's gonna be two separate things.
Whichever, you know, I mean, how, how do you want it, how do you see it proceeding?
Okay, we will do that.
Yeah, go ahead and put that together and give it to the, give it to the council.
Well, yes, and do remember that we have, it has to be submitted by-
The ones they prior to the council meeting, but this is-
No, but the, but the request has to be made.
If they're submitting information to us, then it doesn't have to have a deadline of any kind.
Right, they could just submit.
If they have an actionable item, then it needs to have that deadline of the one day before.
Yeah, I'll go to their-
They can do that in my presentation.
Yeah, yeah, just, just present a report and that'd be fine.
Right, and I go to their meeting, so it's all coordinated.
Now, I'm gonna ask, because we kinda basically have a standstill here at this table. And I'm not trying to cut people off in the audience, but I promise. All right, has anybody got anything else they wanna add? Howard, do you wanna add anything else? So, I'm not gonna put people on the spot here, but I don't wanna cut people off either.
I think we should put people on the spot.
Yeah, I do too.
Deb said what she thought should happen.
I said what I had to say, I think.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't expect it to-
Deborah said what you thought should happen.
I, I would like to see everybody take a stand somewhere. Take a spot and stand on it.
My, my spot is-
This wishy-washy, back and forth, circle conversations is just ridiculous and a waste of my time.
Oh, Deborah, calm down. You don't have to announce on television right now.
Well, if, I'm sorry, but that's how I see it. I'm a person who got on this council because I wanted to see things done. This was one of the objectives I had on my mind when I ran. If we are just gonna keep going around in circles and nothing's gonna change, then let's just drop it. And come budget time, I will vote to close the theater.
My biggest thing is, let's, let's find out what-
Take a side.
What's, well, no, wait a minute. You take a side. You don't take, listen, you don't take a knife to a gunfight, okay? A wise man learns the wisdom of retreat, learns how to max the next day. I'd want that through trial and error, okay?
So, so what are the bullet points that you, that you want us to say in our statement?
My biggest thing is, like I said, let's get that, let's get that, that person in there to look at this to see what the prices would be today. Then we got, so then at least we got a ballpark figure to work with. We'll figure out, okay. Once we do that, then we'll talk to the, the people at the UU building. Then we'll know, okay, can we fund this for another year? Can we fund it for another two years? Are we gonna build a new building or are we gonna try to revamp it? If it, if it's cost me, if it costs $250,000 to do something and then you can revamp the whole thing for $375, you're stupid to revamp it for $250, 'cause you're gonna be revamping it again.
Okay.
That's me.
Tim, that is not taking a stand of position. No, it's not.
How do you see that?
Do you wanna keep the theater open as it is? Do you wanna see it move to privately owned? Make a commitment to what you want it to be. I think we all need to do that and we need to do it now.
Well, all right.
Before we go any further.
All right, here's my commitment. I would like to see that community theater be where it is. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it either if it's worth, if it's not worth fixing and let's see what it would cost to do it brand new. My biggest, I'd like to see either new or used. I'd like to see that community theater in that building. However, if, well-
No however's. Make a stand, let it finish.
In the meantime, in the meantime, it's very important to me that this theater committee, and as much work as they've done, it doesn't go by the wayside. That's why I think the UU building could play a very important part in this. It could help them, it could help us and it could help them, if that's what happens.
Absolutely.
Okay, so my commitment is that we get this estimate, let's see what we're looking at, and then I, my commitment is let's have a new building there. That's my commitment. In the place it is, if that's what's needed. Maybe it isn't needed, maybe it is in bad shapes, I think, but I got a feeling it is. Okay, we'll find out. That's me. Now, am I gonna get blowback? Yes. But I also see this, this could be a money-making outfit down the road here, if it's done correctly. You can make that money back and then some. That's gonna be a hard sell to the town, to the townspeople. And like, like Howard said, you know, we gotta get some more input from the people, too. We have to. But that's my commitment, Deb. Okay? How'd I sound? You didn't kick me, so I guess I'm sounding off.
No, I didn't kick you, but you just said the same thing three times in a row. You have to make the commitment to whether you want this to stay open or to close or to fund it or not fund it. That's, I need, I need to know where the rest of this committee stands on whether we should keep this entity or not. Because we're only going in circles if we don't stand united in a decision.
So, Tim, the only thing that you left out that Deborah's looking for is your view on whether it should be a town committee or a 501(c)(3) operation?
I think ba-, I think based on, based on the way things are going today and the money's end of it, I think it, as much as I hate to say it, I think it should be a 501(c)(3). And I'll go on, I'll go on record on that, okay? I'm not trying to talk in service.
So, you want it to, eventually, we're gonna, the plan to move it from public to, or private or 501(c)(3)?
Correct.
Okay. Next.
I, I view this whole thing as the town is like the bank and the theater is the business and they're building their business and they're selling it to us, the bank, for money. That's what they've done. This whole theater has turned 180 since January, in my view. You know, the way it was run last year is completely different than the way it is this year. But us being the bank and you being a new business per se, because you're, you're totally new, you know, I'm, I'm on shaky ground. If this was year three, I would say, wow, this is really gaining momentum and stuff. And not saying that you can't continue on. That's where I, my, that's my only hesitation to this whole, this whole thing. As long as we can keep going with the same momentum that we've been seeing. We've been seeing results and we've seen, seen positive things. As long as we can keep up with that, I don't think it's gonna be a problem to fund what we have allocated this year until we can-
Well, we can't make any commitments.
Until we can get the 501(c)(3) established for the theater so they can stand on their own legs. And then perhaps the town would be able to kick in some sort of like a donation or, or something like that towards it, like a, an allocation. We, I'm just throwing this out there, say 25 or 30 grand, say a year or something that we, we commit towards this community theater as funds to help, help make sure it sustains itself and, and keeps continuing on for years to come. To me, what I see, two biggest issues. Uh, one is being, you know, like I said, previous statement, it's made a 180. The management's been much different, the way it's been run. People have been thinking outside of the box. It's not just in this theater. It's, uh, performing arts, it's maybe ballet. All these other things that are kinda coming together and I like that. Problem two is the obvious thing that we've been beating to death is the building. That, it's like you, you can't have the horse before the cu-, you, you can't have the car before the horse or whatever. You've gotta have both at the same time to do really well, but that's where we're stuck right now. So, I'm seeing three options. Option one, we keep the building as is. We fix it up and use that. Option two, we blow it up and, you know, tear it down, build a brand-new facility. You know, state-of-the-art, I like to blow up one. Option three, and this option three, I think is more of a temporary solution and not a permanent solution. We choose to work with the UU and we, we kinda utilize their facility to work with them and we maybe put some shows in there, fundraise together, um, for maybe a couple of years. It's gonna take a couple of years to build anything or renovate anything in that building properly. We don't, we, we've done all this work. We want it to be nice when we're done. We don't want this band-aid, bonded over, repainted, spray-painted thing. Like, we want it to be nice, we want it to be proud of it, you know?
It's gonna be a-
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, as Mike, you know, always, Mike Tinkett always says, it's the crown jewel of the town. It's right there in the center of the town. Wouldn't it be nice to have something that's like, has, you know, big letter and says Town of Pittsfield, whatever, Community Center or Performing Arts or whatever it's gonna be. And it's like, you drive through Main Street and you just look over and like, wow, look at that, you know?
That's exactly-
But, you know, we gotta walk, you know, we gotta crawl before we walk, before we run. You know, so we gotta just approach this-
One piece at a time.
Exactly, one piece at a time.
And the first piece is looking at the studies.
Yeah, and, and Mike, I'm gonna make the stand or whatever, buy one (c)(3) eventually. I don't think it's possible to just do it this weekend or anything. So, I, I'd like to see that. Um, I'll make that stand.
Well, that pretty much says-
Is that everything you'd like to?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to ask it from you, but she's still mad at me. I think Washington's view, she's still mad at me.
I'm just, I get frustrated with the waffling.
Well, I think we're all trying to please...
I think we got the same idea.
We can't please everybody and it just, it's, it's never happened, trust me. I have a lot more years with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cable.
Okay. Good job. So I support the 501(c)(3) efforts. I wanna see it on the Main Street. In five years or three years, I wanna see it be one of the things that people talk about. They wanna move to Pittsfield because we've got this asset, um, that is, and I wanna go to other towns and hear people talk about that they wanna go to dinner on Main Street in Pittsfield and go watch a, a show, you know, because it's, it, what, I mean, for years I've heard people talk about how beautiful Pittsfield is and we do have a great little town here. And I think this would just be one more piece to really help clinch it, you know? And obviously we've got some new schools coming, which are gonna help the cosmetics of our schools and some... Sorry, getting off. Um, so I support that, I support that. I wanna see it on the Main Street. And, um, I sup, and I also support working with the UU, with the UU Meeting House and with the idea that that means for at some point here, it's gonna be that we're, that the, that there's gonna be some sacrifices. This is not gonna be the way, the way that this is going to be for the next couple of years is not gonna be even really close to how we really want it, per se. So I think there'll be some big sacrifices, um, in the, the way that it is. But I support those sacrifices to get what we want only if we have, if we are proceeding with our goal with, with laser beam focus, you know? Like, I, I don't want to have the theater or the community, whatever you wanna call it, make these sacrifices and then have us not carry our end. 'Cause I, I want this, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
Howard? Um, I, I think it's, it's very, my approach is very simple. Either, um, the, the theater committee is a theater committee and their approach to it is maybe to perceive definitively towards a 501(c)(3) uh, and, uh, you know, a, a bigger and better, um, you know, center. Uh, and if you don't have, and I know it's asking the lot, if you don't have that in place within the next several months, you know, come into budget time, I'm gonna vote to close it. And you should go to a 501(c)(3) and that, that is the way to go. Because that's the only way that you're, I see that as the only way that you're potentially viable in any way, shape, or form. So that's, that's my approach.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Heather?
She can't read as fast as we can talk.
I didn't say that much, Heather, you know?
You don't think so, but...
I used to take notes at meetings and I know exactly what she's doing.
I do scribble in my system.
Yeah, me too.
Your teachers are all like, you know?
I'm glad I'm not the one that said that.
So, uh, the quick answers would be I favor a 501, oh, I just downed this one. I favor a 501(c)(3) organization. I don't expect the theater committee to become a 501(c)(3) organization though.
Oh, no.
I would not presume that our volunteers would have that in them. Obviously, they're doing a great job and if they want to do that, we're certainly not opposed to that. But I don't think that we should automatically assume that people that have volunteered to have a meeting or two and do a little bit of volunteer work at the theater um, are gonna have room for this in their lives, you know? So I, I do favor a 501(c)(3) status for that. I do favor somebody other than the town, um, running, uh, the theater, whatever that entails. Uh, mostly because we, we've successfully demonstrated that we don't do a good job doing it. You know, we've, we've, we've successfully demonstrated that, that the town does not do a good job with the mechanism we have in place right now, with committee members changing every two or three years and, and that mechanism just is not a successful model. That does not diminish the work that the theater committee has done this year at all.
Nope.
Because I think that, uh, the focus of the committee has changed and, um, that whole laser focus, you know, they've had, you know, the one goal is to stay open and I think that's been the driving force for all the work that's been being done. And, um, and they've been successful at doing that, you know? We're almost at the end of June and they're still here.
It shows in the numbers, too.
Um, so anyway, so I favor 501(c)(3) status, separation from the town for operations and I would say even ownership of the building. And that's something that we didn't really talk about. We talked about strictly operations. I don't think the town should be owning this building. I do think that the town, if we want to maintain this idea of its, uh, community programming in order to have the theater become a cultural center and, and have that addition to the town, um, I can get behind that. I can get behind, uh, a regular donation to an organization to do that. And as a 501(c)(3), it would be public reporting, so we don't have issues around those types of things.
Right.
Um, there would be public records filed and whatnot. Um, I am more reserved about the building itself. I really don't think it makes any sense at all. Just the dollar figure that we had on the building repairs, um, from several years ago, it's definitely not gonna be less than that. And for $780,000, you could put up a pretty nice building, um, for that money. Whether it stays on Main Street or not, I'm not as, uh, committed to that. I don't think that, um, it would hurt to have more space, both for parking, if we're gonna have 200 to 300 people filling seats on a regular basis um, and be able to have more actual seats. I think that, uh, while it's certainly had a role on Main Street and, uh, for many people here in town, I, like Howie and Deb, did not grow up here. Um, but I grew up in a small town that had a one-screen theater. And when we lost it, it was, um, you know, it left us with nothing to do. I can't say that. We had a mini golf place. And a roller skating rink.
That's when you turn to yours.
We lost a roller skating rink. Yeah, so, but, you know, since that time, my hometown has, um, the Oakburg Inn closed in a fire, so it wasn't like anybody chose to do it. Um, but it was also an actual motel and a bar and a restaurant and...
We actually have, with the carriage.
So the, um, you know, but that doesn't mean that we don't have other things that, uh, can fill that space in downtown, like many, I don't know what. But, um, but I don't know if it makes sense to shoehorn it into a downtown space um, or at least that particular downtown space. I think that, um, we could find other space in town, like maybe that big blue building, um...
The old wooden mill.
You know, it has lots of states...
That Chimbo's using for storage right now.
Right. Um, you know, so maybe there's...
Hey, I suggested that as a community center.
So maybe there's other options, uh, in, in town that would still be in town but not necessarily on Main Street. So I'm not like sold on keeping it there. I'm not sold on, uh, maintaining the building as it is. I think that, uh, it has a really big price tag to fix. Um, and then you're still left with a really big, I mean, you could put a new roof on it, but you're still left with a really old building with a lot of limitations. And if you have a grand idea of what you wanna do with it, you wanna make sure that you have the space to do those things in order to be successful. Um, I do think it's a good idea as a stopgap measure to partner with the UU Meeting House, um, mostly 'cause mine didn't give it, so I still think it's a good idea. Um, I do think it, it does give, uh, more options to, um, a 501(c) or (3) or the theater committee in order to do fundraising. Uh, parking is really, really limited over there, so that's a downfall for that. Um, but, uh, yeah, so that's where I'm at. 501(c)(3), partial town funding, um, and partnerships with other entities in the community in, in order to, uh, to make it happen and evaluation of the building.
Okay, thank you. Um, like I said...
I thank all of you. At least now I know where everybody stands.
Um, I wanna thank everybody that came here tonight. And again, this, this was an informational knockaround, some ideas, some from way out here, some from way out here, some in the middle, um, just to get a general idea. Uh, I, I personally, I, I feel that even though I like the idea of a community theater, like I said, 501(c)(3) seems to be where your grant funding and, and all your different things are gonna come from, so I'd be in favor of that, even though I do like the idea of a community theater. Just, it's, I think it's kind of outlandish time. I am in favor of seeing a building there, just basically because that, that is the center of town and I think it belongs there and I, I have lived here my whole life and I've never known it to be anything else except that. Um, so maybe that I'm a little skewed that way. Everything has a price tag, you have to pay for it. And, um, I am for the theater committee, um, coming up with some ideas for a 501(c)(3) and presenting it as a report in, and that's fine. And, um, hopefully, we can get a new, uh, new theater there eventually, one way or the other. It's gonna be a long process, but this is step one. So, thank you for coming and I will ask...
Before we wrap up, I would like to establish a timeline for moving forward rather than having it open-ended, this stuff is gonna happen. Catherine, do you think that, uh, the walkthrough with the architect and the, uh, engineer, whether it's from Chimbo or another person? I'm, I'm a little leery, I've always invited Chimbo to do things too. I mean, I think they're a really good neighbor, they're a really good business to have in town, but I don't think that we wanna wear out the alchymatic.
It was an independent study.
Well, I know, but we throw out that, we'll ask Chimbo a lot and I don't want them to be taken for granted, that they're always gonna be there to help us. I think that if we wanted to, we need to be able to, to do it and stand on our feet and accept any help that's offered graciously, but to be cautious about how much we go and ask for them for help. So next week is the 4th of July and then we have egg test in the week. Our next council meeting is the 16th, that's three weeks away. Do you think that we could have that information ready for the council meeting?
You'll have, you'll have all the information from the studies right off. It will be based upon the schedules of the engineer and the architect as to when the walkthroughs could be taking place.
Are you just gonna email us that information?
Yes, yes.
So, um, are we gonna present that to the town council at a meeting or are we just gonna receive that inform, the updated information?
All right, you're gonna get your information from the studies right off, so within a couple of days.
The updated stuff.
Yeah, so you'll get that, you might get it tomorrow. And then we need to have the architect and engineer's schedules so that we can fit in it for everybody that wants to go. So I'll give you some dates as soon as possible.
Okay.
Remember, it's summer, uh...
It's gonna be out by then.
Summer vacation for, for the people, yeah.
Um, so, so the 16th, we probably won't have all that done by the 16th, but our next meeting isn't until August 6th, so...
You would be done well before then.
Okay. 'Cause I, I think we should schedule another workshop.
I agree.
The 23rd of July, it's a Tuesday.
Just keep it that, same 6:30, 6... Yeah, this 6:30 thing screwed me up, just so you know.
I think we need to have all the meetings at the same time.
I thought it was 6:30 and then I was like, I'm gonna be... All right, so, August...
What did I say?
If we can get here at 6:00 though and get done at 8:00.
It's really tough to get here at 6:00. I like stuffed a bunch of chips in my mouth on my way here.
Heather, that's not...
I ate at 3, no, I ate at 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Well, I was on a tractor tilling a field this morning this afternoon, so...
So what are we...
6:30, 6 is tough.
Then you have it overall.
What are we looking at now?
The 23rd of July, can we have a second workshop?
I will try, I can't guarantee it. I don't know what, I don't have my schedule in front of me, so, but I'll try. If, if I get...
At 6:30.
Yeah, if, if I got something I can't get out of, you're gonna have to excuse me out of it, but...
Well, July 23rd, 6:30.
Council meeting is the 16th, right?
Yeah.
So I believe the 23rd is the day that you're gonna use if you had a workshop on the budget.
Right, we, that's the finance committee, isn't that, you were gonna get us those dates?
Yes.
Or have somebody put those two calendars together?
Right, yes, I have, I have that one.
Small gift to somebody to do.
So can we have the workshop, we're gonna have a workshop on the 23rd. Can we have this be an item to, um, have a brief discussion?
You can do both.
Um, and then address the finance committee, no, it's not a finance committee meeting, it's a workshop meeting for the budget.
On the budget.
Right, right.
'Cause this is one of the items that we said was gonna be a big thing to tackle, so I think it's appropriate to discuss it there. 'Cause whatever they say is gonna have an impact on what we decide to do for the budget.
Yes, and the finance committee wanted the proposed schedule presented at the July 16th meeting. I'll set the...
Right, let it have all the, all the dates in one place so we can see, so I can make sure I get them all on my calendar.
Okay, so if we have, um...
So we're adding a workshop on the 23rd of July?
The 23rd of July would be a workshop to discuss our follow-up from this...
Okay.
...meeting and regular budget, 'cause we wanted to start the budget earlier. So that would be...
6:30?
6:30.
Let's keep to the 6:30.
Yeah, 6:30.
I, I just wondered, as far as the meeting with the architecture and the engineer and stuff, will the committee be also invited to attend that?
Yeah, yeah.
And then I have, of course, we have the reviews that we had copies of here, but, I don't know about you guys, but I never saw the Chimbo one. Is there a way that we could get that emailed as well?
It's an older study and it wasn't done by Chimbo. It was done by an engineer who worked at Chimbo.
Oh, Ben.
Good.
Yeah. So we'll see if he's interested in, you know, working with us on that. Or at least presenting it.
Um, so that, that brings us through July, um, unless we want to have another meeting the following week, I'm not there yet.
Um, okay.
'Cause there's two weeks between...
You were gonna relay that week?
I leave the 31st. The 31st will be a really long day.
So when is the workshop for the budget?
The 23rd.
That was gonna be the 23rd.
And we're, so we're just not gonna have that?
We're gonna have that and discuss it.
And this one?
We're gonna see it as a major budget item.
Okay.
Of course.
So a schedule from the 23rd, like I said, I'll take a look at my schedule. You said the, what was the other one, the 30th?
30th.
I'll have to take a look. 'Cause I got a very busy schedule in July, unfortunately.
The 30th was a backup.
As a backup for the 23rd or a backup because we need more discussion?
A back, uh, for both, yes. In case when we presented the, uh, the budget calendar, a majority of the counselors weren't able to be at the July 23rd, then we were gonna do it the 30th.
So why don't we schedule a second workshop and we can decide on the 23rd whether we need it or not?
That's what I'm doing. I'm putting the 30th in my calendar and then if we don't need it, take, don't have to.
It's a backup.
Backup. All right.
6:30.
Anything else?
Save.
And...
So workshop on the 23rd and 30th, if we need it.
Which we thought might happen anyway.
Right.
At the finance committee meeting.
Yeah, it's a, we're gonna have a budget meeting, budget workshop and theater workshop. I think we're gonna need that second workshop.
So our, our, I, I would like to see our workshops have a goal. That by the end of the meeting, we're gonna have a, a consensus, not a decision, but a consensus. I think it would be progress on that tonight.
Yeah.
Um, but I'd like to see a consensus goal for the workshop on the 23rd be to decide, um, or consens...
Yeah, no decisions.
About the, um, the building issue, like what to do with the building.
Okay, so, will we be able to go through the building before that workshop?
Well, the option would be to go through the building with the architect and the engineer when they go through, Catherine will let us know, right?
Yeah, we will get meetings set up as soon as we can, understanding that a lot of people are on vacation during this period of time.
Yeah, I think just set the meeting for when they're available and then whoever can go will go.
Whoever can go, though. We'll all still have the studies.
We'll get the report and we'll get the study and the information from them, so if that's all we have to go on.
Are we asking the engineer to give us new...
One of the points, one of the items will be, is there a way for you to project forward the cost?
Okay, thank you.
And we'll work with them on that.
Given that report from 2016, just...
Correct, yes.
I think the other piece of information we need is some information about the building next door. If, if there's an option there, it is for sale or for rent or whatever, but if the option is there, then I think that, uh, we need to have that information as well as the information about the theater building as well. I know, but I was talking, so I wanted to finish my thought.
Have you done that?
I have toured it this spring. And Duane Ames is interested in selling it in two years. That gives us time if we choose to go with that group, to go through it, look it over. It appears to be very nice. I have to say, I'm not an expert, but I have faith that, um, Kleinschmidt wouldn't have put that Kleinschmidt wouldn't have put as much money into it as they have if it wasn't somewhat decent. He has maintained it very nicely. He's put new roofing on in the back end. He's put new this in and new that in. So it's fairly updated and new. And he did give me a price at the time. But he, he did return after we met and called me back and said, "I just want to make it clear that you can rent it all you want for the next two years," but, or lease it. "But I'm really not interested in selling it for two years." And I'm assuming there's like a retirement type of situation, why he wants to hang on to it for two years. But that building does a butt, obviously, the theater. And you were talking about stage.
Facing.
You were talking about, thank you, dressing rooms and green rooms and stuff like that. That I have talked to theater people such as Deb Soucy. And I've asked her, because I'm not a theater person, I enjoy watching it, but I, no way would I get on stage. But I asked her, "Is it feasible to have everything go in and out to one side?" "Oh, yeah," she said, "of course." And it's a big building, so there's plenty of storage upstairs. I don't know, I, this is just throwing it out there, it's probably crazy talk, but there's plenty of room up there. There, the sky's the limits. Whether it's residential, you know, a caretaker type of thing, I, I don't know. But there's stuff that could be thought about down the road. It's, it's a, it's a nice building.
So we need to see some information about that before the next.
Like a spec sheet, or how big is it, you know?
Square footage and floors and.
We have some of that information.
Oh, good.
You have that around? We have some of that, yes.
All right, is there, is there anything else that people want to throw in here before? Because we're getting past our time and we agreed to here.
Well, did we agree on a goal for the next meeting?
Well, I think to, to review those and to make a decision on the building. I think that we really need to just make, start making decisions. Because if we make a decision on the building, that affects.
Consensus.
There are consensus about the building, it affects what could happen in the budget.
Then we can present it to the council.
You know, it has impacts for what we're going to be talking about. Is that later that meeting and then the following one, and the following, the following one. So we need to make those consensuses to decide.
The architect may be running down here.
Yeah, to just, because we need that information before we go forward on the rest of our budget. Because I think, you know, I think this has, it's definitely going to have a budget impact one way or another. And it could be sizable, depending on what we think we might want to pursue. Or it could not. So I think that we need that information.
Yep.
But I think we need to make that our goal for the next meeting, is to make a consensus.
Sounds good to me.
Agreed.
Everybody agreeing that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Not hearing any? I'm going to vote for motion to this to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in our first workshop.
Anne, you did say that you already have the start of a group to be a steering committee like we talked about. So will you continue to pursue that?
Especially now that we're starting again.
And how do you feel after this meeting?
Well, better. The second half was better than the first.
See why Y and Z are up, right?
We're trying. And I think the workshop is the way that I'll. I know it's really hard to go to and sit there and not.
I just don't think people are getting ahead of themselves from halftime. But first decisions.
But we have, right, but we have to have. The way it's done, just the way that it works.
I never thought that it was in the packet.
Yeah, and it wasn't in the packet. We just went over it at the meeting.
Okay.
Because the rate is a little.
Sorry. It was higher than the bond. I mean, that bank was like.
Yes.
So. They stayed, they haven't changed anything. But not until July when we can track that exactly. Tell us what it's about.
So you're still on the dual track.
We're still on the dual rate, yeah. So it's a bit more, but it would be so much easier once we get the updated rates from that, before we start going to the next. That's what we're hoping. It's more toward the, you know, being a carrier. That way we'll have the money right, if we need it.
You don't have to do the other stopgap stuff.
Which we can do, because with Lycra we can borrow some money. There's more money in that. Right now, we have the money to put down and then they go on. It's still good, but it would be more.
The water meter reader thing?
Yes, they've been doing renewals, sending out bills.
I was wondering about that. I'm like, oh.
Is this mine? Is this mine?
Yes. And actually, there haven't, because I've been in the town office quite a bit for the last few months. There's only been a few calls.
Who's going to call it because they didn't receive a warrant?
Well, no, but everybody knows that they should have gotten one. But I think the word has spread quickly that, that it was broken and.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
And Jamie.
Long internee.
I don't have your number.
Have a good night.
You have a good night, Jamie.
You need it.
So thank you.
I was kind of agreeing with you.
I know, but I was trying to get you to make a stand.
Oh, a stand. I got you.
So that's good, actually, that we don't have that meeting, because I never put it on my calendar.
I will send the updated schedule. First year, then similar to the council, so that we thought that we could just present it.
And are you using?
In the packet.
I figured that, I'm really sorry.
And then we like it.
Better now.
So much.
487.
Is this a cell?
Yep. I don't know how I got a 487.
Well, you can get your, you can.
1-9-8-0.
1-9-8-0. Thank you, Heather.
Sorry, you're having too many doors going in the hallway.
1-9-what?
1-9, you got it all.
That's right, 0, okay, safe.
Looking at you, you got me.
Yay, all right, thank you, girl. I will be talking to you soon.
Okay, sounds good. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to cancel the finance committee meeting this Thursday because the only topic that would be on there is to go over the consolidated schedule and do the warrant, which is already done.
Right.
So that should be fine. Good.
I probably pissed the shit out, I'm sure Heather is like fuming, but. I, I'm sorry, I can't work like that.
I know, I've, I've got.
Decide where you stand, well.
It's been, it's been hard, but it goes around in circles for the last couple of years. No, it has.
I can't, I can't work like that. Can't do it, not going to do it. And this council refuses to do the work ahead of them and spend the time. You know, I understand people work and have jobs and other commitments, but this is a huge commitment. When you choose to run for town council, this is how I feel about it. And the first time I was on the council, I was working and I never missed a meeting. Until I got sick. You know, and I gave it all the time that it needed and I was always available.
Yeah, I remember.
So, you know, if you can't make that commitment, you shouldn't run for office.
I think they made the commitment.
And then get rid of them, because they forget how much other stuff they have.
There is so much that we could work on, yes.
Well, and yes, that's the other thing, is that we are overwhelmed by everything that needs to be done because of things not done.
Well, we can't do anything at once and pick out the priorities and work on that.
Well, and.
That's what I had to do when I got here. I mean, I still am amazed that we got through everything that was here when I got here.
Well, we'll get, we'll get.
And we'll get through this.
It's like, get on tonight.
But I think the fact.
Make a stand.
I think the fact that council could actually talk without all the interruptions was good.
I'm telling you, Amber Quinn, I wanted to slap. And that's still on?
It should be off, but let's, you know, we'll talk tomorrow.
I think the workshops are great. This is Amber's copy, but I'll, I'll copy this tomorrow when I come in.
Yeah, well, we can make copies for you and.
I can run this through the corriere and return it. You don't have to wait on me.
No, no, that's okay.
Oh my God, I'm going to break you of so many bad habits before I'm done.
You're a counselor. We're used to running around to do things.
Well, no. And that's got to stop.
I know, I'm just used to doing that.
Well, I did want to show you something else that I brought. And I don't know if you'll look at it tonight or not. But I haven't made copies, but. So, these are two things that I truly believe in and are taught to business administration students. So I would like you to read these and not take it personally.
No, no, that's okay. This is different than public administration, but that doesn't mean that there are good things.
There are, there are some basic similarities.
There's a next batch.
What's this, minutes? What's 20, what are these, minutes?
Yep.
Okay, except that, yeah, we'll have to talk about this tomorrow.
Yeah, we need to set it up a bit differently. It'll make it easier for them too, like when I was talking to them about the sticks. Because they get confused and then they can't remember.
Right, and so if we have a sheet that has like the basic stuff that right now is in everybody's job description, then they can just, I can do it with a spreadsheet and they can just check off with hash marks.
Yes, yes, yes.
And just do it for a week.
Yeah.
Because then we can, we can project.
That's how I used to do my time studies and now I have regular log. But when I do the time study, I set up the categories and I got the major categories I work on and then I got the things under them. And then that way I've got, it's already sort of tallied as you go along. And then you do the, the sub-tallies.
That's when you know everything that people are doing, but have wanted to discover what people were doing.
Well, that's part of it, but the other part is.
Now we've discovered, now we're going to make it more streamlined.
Yeah, and the job descriptions, we're going to make those line up and hopefully get, I'd like to get two new positions. If we can get, if I can convince the council.
Yeah.
And I know it'll be a tough sell, but I have, I have firsthand knowledge now.
Oh, yeah.
Mike Lynch wanted some leadership, well, I'm giving it to him. I know firsthand, we need these two positions. We had them years ago when you first came. And at the time, they were rearranged and eliminated for various reasons.
Yes, yes.
And, but we are now back at a point where we process so much information that we need those two positions back.
Which is why some of these things fall beside the wayside.
And the police chief should have a full-time administrate, administrative assistant who can also help the officers. It makes perfect sense to me, so.
Hi, do you know how we're doing?
Good.
Did you find your daughter?
Yeah, here you want to slap her.
Just kidding around.
Let's go have them do it right now.
I know. I don't want, I do not want to slap her.
We're just teasing.
I don't think it's teasing.
I wasn't being derogatory.
Oh, yes.
I was not being derogatory.
You said you didn't say you want to slap her.
Well, I was just kidding around. I swear to God.
They kid around.
It was not meant to be aggressive in any way.
So have you turned the?
No.
It wasn't.
Why?
It was not.
I think I'll have to come to the next council meeting.
Okay. I'm looking at you right now, saying, "I'm sorry if you thought that, that was not my intent. I was just Heather and Heather." Amber.